Really, really do. I've been here like, oh. Now we, we just need, need them to sing like, like the tiki room. And we would be great. All right, the time is now five thirty. This is, it is Aug- August ninth, twenty twenty-two. This is the reg- regular board me- meeting of the Odda Lonto Element Mentory School Dis- District. Um, I need, we are at one point zero three. Roll, roll call and quorum estab- establishment.
Trustee Eckes.
Present.
Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner. Trustee Webster.
Webster present.
Trustee Benz.
Benz pres- present. The time, time is now five thirty-one. Okay, go, going on to one, one point zero, zero four, the pledge of allegiance. Please stand, place your right, right hand o- over your heart. Red, ready, be, be, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the country, and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank, thank you. Okay, go, going on to ad- adoption of the agenda. A two point zero one per proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the, the order of business.
Madam President, we do not have any.
Okay, thank, thank you. Two point zero zero two, ad- adoption of the agen- agenda. I, I need a mo- motion to approve.
Eckes sign motion.
Okay, we've got a mo- motion by Eck- Eckes, and I nee- need a sec- second.
Webster seconds.
Thank you. Okay, a call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- motion pass, passes five zero zero. Okay, go, going on to spec- special rec- recognition. We have the animatronics presentation by Ms. Mr. Carl- Carlson and his stu- students. And the floor, floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, as Mr. Carlson is making his way up here. We are excited to, first off, let me recognize Mr. Carlson. He's been a teacher in our district for twenty years. So let's give him a round of applause if we can for being with us for twenty years. I think it's outstanding when we have such educators in our district that are dedicated to our students. And this evening, he's going to bring up students from Melva Davis Academy of Excellence, and they will be demonstrating these birds that you see in front of you. So we're excited with that. Mr. Carlson, take it away.
All I did was drive the van. Mrs. Yuskovich sent me the first email. She let us go. Mrs. O'Brien agreed to go. Otherwise, I couldn't go because I couldn't go alone. And the girl's parents were wonderful, so all I did was drive the van. So what the girls are going to do is they're going to tell you their name. Uh, they're going to tell you their name, and then they're going to tell you their favorite thing about being at camp. And then they're each going to let their bird do its presentation. Unfortunately, Jalen's not here tonight, and Jalen's bird and Rayland's bird talk to each other. So in that case, you're only going to hear half the conversation, and just pretend that your phone doesn't work quite well. I think we'll start with Nicole Maldonado.
Hello, my name is Nicole. I go to school at Melva Davis Academy. I am in seventh grade. For my project, I was supposed to build, program, and decorate my animatronic songbird. I imagined my bird would look like an American robin. The stomach is orange, the feathers are meant to be gray and black, and some fur is gray. I use my creativity to design my bird. I made flowers to give it a happier touch. Here is how I made my bird. I built the base and this tea stand. Second, I built the body and attached it to my tea stand. Third, I placed my motors onto the body. Next, I painted the fur and head and connected it to the body. Then I glued the feathers to the body shell. Finally, I programmed and recorded my movement and finished any details. My favorite part of the project was decorating and designing how my bird would look like. My show is about me interviewing and asking questions to my bird. Let me show you.
Hello, thank you for joining us. Today, we will be interviewing one of the most common birds in America, the American robin.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to meet you all. My name is Cherry Lily. My friends call me Cherry. Many birds ask me a lot of questions, and that's why I'm here to answer.
Let's start with the first question. Can you sing?
Of course I can. I can tell some people recognize talent.
Amazing vocals. Next question. What parts of the world can American robins be found?
Well, it depends on the season, but other than that, mostly all of North America. But ever since I had a memory, I've lived in Olympic National Park.
What do you guys eat?
I enjoy eating berries and fruit. Flavor that it has is just delicious. Every once in a while, I'll be in the desert on earth, just for a little bit.
I imagine your life being perfect.
That is the problem. Many people think that we are in no danger, that everything in our life is perfect, but that is not true. We are having problems with our biggest enemy, cats. Cats are a threat to my species. If you guys would like to help us, please, thank you, cats indoors.
I have also heard that pesticides is also harming you guys.
Yes, that too. You have to keep sooner or later. But it's dangerous to eat earthworms if people add pesticides to their lawns. So to everyone hearing this, please, help us stay alive. Even though we're not endangered or close to being endangered, we should still help to keep us birds alive for future generations.
Amazing speech. I want to give a big thanks to Cherry for coming here and answering these questions that many people were dying to know.
Thank you all for having me here today, and see you later.
Thank you, Nicole. Elizabeth Sanchez.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Sanchez, and my favorite thing about this ex- experience was building the bird and designing it how I wanted it and to look like. And yeah, I'll show you. Right here.
Howdy, everyone. I'm Bynova the Golden Eagle. I'm going to tell y'all a story about a young bird. So one day, she saw her mom soaring over y'all for a nice night. When suddenly, her mom dropped to the ground, falling on rocks, and the teacher jumped up. She was really a bird, so even after she dropped the teacher, she grabbed her brother Edgar and went into the forest. As she missed her got farther away, they saw three men with guns. They were pouring lead horses all over the area. Edgar made a loud scream with the guns. He put them in a tree. But luckily, they had a great decision.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Heaven Aquino.
Hello, my name is Heaven Aguano. I am in seventh grade. And my favorite thing about this experience was showing my creativity to others and learning how to make an animatronic bird. I'm going to show you how it works.
I'll find it. Go ahead and start on. You're not watching?
Howdy, y'all. My name is Woody, or should I say hi? Hello, everyone. My name is Woody. Oh, no, I see a wanted poster of a crook on this tree over here. We better save the world before all my favorite foods like mice and rabbits disappear. Let's go get me some wood from the tree I live in so I can make a trap to catch this crook. All done. Phew, that was a lot of ruckus, but I finished it. Let's put this up and catch this no-do get- wood. I'm all done putting up this trap to catch this crook. Now I better get him move on and camouflage in the woods. Ha ha, I caught you, you crook. Good thing I used my beaks and talons to defend myself. I would have been dead meat. Guess I have this problem solved. You're staying in prison for your whole life. I'll make sure you never come out of here and be locked in forever. I better get going. And my family's probably worried about me. I want to thank everyone for this award. I couldn't do without my species saving the world, AKA the blue Virginia. Bye-bye, everyone. Make sure if you need help, you can always call me anytime. I can see and do anything, anytime, especially at night. Yee-haw.
Our last presentation will be from Ray Lynn. Unfortunately for us, Ray Lynn's bird talks to Jalen's bird, and for a reason that I don't know, Jalen's not here. So we're going to have a little talking, and then a little space where there would be more talking, and back and forth. Ray Lynn?
Hello, I'm Rayla Martinez. I'm in seventh grade. And my favorite part of this experience was getting to build a bird and learning about things I've never even knew existed before.
Howdy, y'all. I'm Venus, and this is my brother Mario. Say hi, Mario. We are part of the Tyler family. This is because of our last name. Yee-haw. We love to eat bugs, but we best be careful, or else those snakes will get us. Hey, that was my part, Mario. That's not my name. You know that, Mars. Well, you started it. Anyway, as I was saying before, my brother stole my park. We love to eat bugs. There's a lot of them around these parks. We have mountains, streams, and trees. At least I don't look silly and fly around in circles for no reason. But you make yourself look crazy. It's all right. I'm sorry too. Come visit us at Yellowstone National Park. Mario, it's not a TV show.
And just quickly, I want to mention, when they started, they were given a wooden T-frame, then a bag of electronics and computer chips and motors, and everything that's in there, they did themselves.
Members of the board, if we could get a picture out there with the students. And Mr. Carlson, if you could turn the birds around to face the audience. And while he's doing that, I want to thank the parents for supporting their children in this endeavor. It's very important that you're engaged with your students, and it shows the amount of effort that went into this. And so thank you, and also to the team at Melva Davis. If you can stand up in the back, the administrative team at Melva Davis that supported these students as well, let's give them a round of applause as well. So thank you so much for that. And with that, we're going to come around and get a nice photo.
Hey, board, do you have an and, and you com- comments or ques- questions for our presenters?
That was amazing.
Yes. I would like to say, I, I didn't know how true to the tiki room this was going to be. This is like our own A- AESD tiki, tiki room. And I want to say, you should be proud of your, your, yourselves, because this is a huge und- undertake taking, and I don't know who's already ready, planning for next year, what you're going to do. Anybody? Or are, are you like, nah, going to take, take a break? Because I know I'm always like, oh, I could do this. So, you know, I, I hope to, to see, see, see it again. And we real, really are im- impressed.
I would just like to say, when Mr. Carlson emailed me regarding this field trip and wanted to do a board presentation, I was really excited, because we haven't had students in the boardroom in quite a long time. And, but to see this presentation, I had no idea. You know, it just goes to show that our children are talented. And, and I'm sure that you had fun doing it. I'm just blown away looking at these birds and, and the work that you put into them. And keep up the good work. Awesome.
Thank you. All right, now we got to go on to four close session.
What, what about me?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Trust, trusty La French. I'm so sorry. Please, please share with us.
So, um, I'm sorry that I can't be with everyone tonight. I have my daughter that had a second knee surgery, so I'm not able to make it tonight. However, I wanted to see this and to be able to see it even on Zoom. It was so wonderful. I was saying to myself, wow, if I could do something like that, I wouldn't even know what to do with myself. You know, it is awesome. I am so proud of each and every one um, that participated. And to be able to show your own individuality, to be able to color them however you want to. Each one is an individual. It was awesome. Um, I know that Ben's just said that, you know, are you looking forward to next year? I bet you guys are looking forward to next year. That was awesome. I was looking like, oh, my God, like, we could do our own animation. We could have our own movie or something come out. You know, that is awesome. I'm very, very proud.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, tr- trustee La French, I, I have a post, posted here, and I'm going to post it right here, so I don't forget about ever again. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Trustee Eckes?
Oh, ditto. You guys are awesome. Those are beautiful birds. I know you're proud, and we're proud of you. I know your parents are proud of you, and you're going to get to cherish those, I hope, for many, many years. So congratulations. They're just beautiful. Thank you.
Okay. We're good. Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for being here tonight with all of us. Thank you for presenting to us. You did a phenomenal job. And, you know, it's kids like you in this district that inspire those around you. So thank you for being amazing, and keep it up. These just gave me goosebumps. So thank you.
All right, here we go. So now we're going to go to close sess- session. Deck- duckler- lera- rations, we will, will be be tak- taking i- items four point zero two and to four point zero, zero five into closed sess- session. Move, moving on to five pub- public test, testimony, be, 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 be for closed sess- session. Do we have an, any speakers for closed sess- session?
Madam President, we do not have any speakers for closed session.
Okay, so we'll go on to six recess to closed sess- session. Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh, what is wrong with me today? Um, A- ADTA or CSEA represent sent- sent to test for closer. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, board members, cabinet, Mr. Kraus, and all stakeholders attending on this fine evening. I didn't have this, but the kids did such a great job, and so did the teachers. Very, very impressive. This was a really lovely display. Thank you. Okay. Just two days into the new school year, and things are flowing along smoothly. Our enrollment numbers continue to grow as parents are utilizing online registration and even walking into the enrollment center and are able to register students to start school immediately. Mr. Moran has been tremendously responsive to our concerns about our numbers in K-three being over the state limit of twenty-four, and our classes in the upper grades being packed full with more students enrolling all the time. Our solution has been to engage substitute teachers or roving subs to alleviate the strain on teachers. We are meeting on Friday to manage all the classes, and we are committed to finding the perfect balance, keeping class sizes at an optimal level to maximize teacher-student engagement opportunities and positively impact student learning outcomes. I hope that everyone recognizes that our teachers' working conditions are your students' learning conditions. A jam-packed classroom serves no one. Most students need individual attention and differentiation of the curriculum, especially with the range of skills found in each grade level. Most of all, it is patently unfair to the students to pack the classes so full that new enrollments cause new classes to be formed, disrupting the students' learning as they are moved to new classes. We develop rapport with our students from day one, and it can be traumatic for the students to be shuffled around like a deck of cards. I want to take a moment now to commend Mr. Kraus. He has been visiting our campuses on our two prep days in order to encourage the teachers and to find out what was needed. I have every expectation that any problems that arise will be handled favorably and expediently. Mr. Kraus has demonstrated a commitment to improving this district, creating a culture of cooperation between administrators and teachers. I look forward to a terrific year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Do, do we have a speak, speaker from C- CSEA? No, okay. Okay, so now we can go on to six recess to closed sess- session. Can I get a mo- motion?
Eckes.
Okay, I have a mo- motion from trustee Eck- Eckes, and I nee- need a se- second.
Webster, a second.
Okay. Uh, can you call for, for the vote? Vote, please.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Eck.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, mo- um, I. Mo- motion path passes five zero zero. The time is now five fifty seven, seven PM. Okay, thank, thank you. And see how it comes. Okay, let's go, 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 go ahead and re- 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 recon- convene to o- open sess- sess- session. Let, let's call to or order and, uh, seven point zero zero two. Can I have a roll, roll call, please?
Yes, Madam President, the time is eight seventeen, and I'll take roll call. Trustee Eckes.
Uh, present.
Trustee La French.
La French, present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster present.
Trustee Benz.
And Ben- Benz pres- present. Quorum, quorum is, is estab- established. Go, go, going on to eight, closed sess- session re- report. Um, we, we actually do have some re- report portable a- actions. Uh, the, the board took ac- action in closed sess- session to, to accept the fine, final set settlement agreeing agreement for OAH case num- number two zero two two zero five zero five seven one. It was moved by trustee Turn- Turner and sec- seconded by tru- trustee Web- Webster. The vote was un- unanimous five zero zero. Okay, and then as well, we have another, another one. The board took a- action in closed sess- session to accept the fine, final agree- agreement. I mean, set, settlement agree- agreement for OAH case nu- number two zero two two zero one zero six four one. It was moved by trustee Turn- Turner and sec- seconded by tru- trustee Wes- Webster. The vo- vote was un- unanimous five zero zero. Okay, so now go, going on to nine pub- public test, testimony, mo- moni. Okay, uh, do I have a speak, speaker from A- ADTA? Okay, uh, do I have a speak speaker from A A D T A? Is her thing on, guys? Is her mic on?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening again. Storytime. When I first came to this district, I had just left Riverside Unified because my husband and I found an affordable house in Victorville. Atalanta was a small district, six, maybe seven schools. After being in a huge district where the administration treated teachers and staff with a gotcha mentality and as numbers, it was a relief to be in a district where everyone was on the same page. Public servants who are here to serve students. Our union worked well with our administrators. Let me hold on one second to get my. Our union worked well with our administrators and the district office facilitated the whole thing. Our board meetings were open and accessible and closed sessions were rare and short. Board meetings were an opportunity to showcase our schools and our students. I am so pleased that this tradition is returning this year and tonight's demonstration was a terrific example and it set the bar far really high for us. I'd like you to consider the teachers behind these projects. They are humble and they say things like, I only drove the van. But in reality, they taught these students, they inspired these students. And forgive the cliche, but they treat these teachers truly are the wind beneath their wings. So back to my story, we had a working relationship, partnership, the administrators and the teachers, and it was not at all contentious. We appreciated each other, we worked well together. Over the years, however, the relationship between the teachers and administrators have in some cases become strained. The bargaining table began to be a battlefield. The revolving door of superintendents and human resources directors did not help much. There was no time to develop trust and faith in one another, and without a sense of our shared history, the newcomers the newcomers tore down bridges that we had taken years to build. I feel, however, that a new day is dawning. Cooperation and collaboration across all levels of leadership and a restored respect for our teachers seems to be emerging. Now is the time to demonstrate that renewed partnership and strategically plan to compete in the bidding war that is going on all around the high desert in other districts. Districts are competing to attract teachers and we are losing many of our teachers to these other districts. Teachers are leaving the profession in droves and districts are doing all they can to target teachers and they are offering more years of service, higher salaries, and better benefits. It isn't just teachers. Our administrators are leaving also for better pay elsewhere and our classified staff as well. Our I T department desperately needs more workers, but the salaries simply aren't competitive. It doesn't seem as though A E S D is reacting to this competition among districts, and as a result, we don't even have a seat at the table. We have amazing and talented teachers, but our spirits are broken because we feel such a lack of respect at the bargaining table. Teachers who feel appreciated will go above, beyond, and then some every time. And recognizing our efforts and our accomplishments would buoy our spirits. But appreciation only goes so far. Our district needs to demonstrate that appreciation by giving us salaries that compete with our neighboring districts. The budget from Sacramento is larger than ever before and it is irresponsible to hoard that money in reserves that are at least three times what is required. A cost of living adjustment should at least come close to the current inflation rate, otherwise it's simply a cut in pay. But this is not just about money. The bigger picture is that it is about students. These students deserve to be taught by people who feel valued and appreciated and we cannot afford to continue to lose our greatest assets in this district. Please spend today's money on today's students. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, do we have a speed speak speaker from C C S E A? No. Okay, do we have mem- members of the pub- public?
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to welcome to the podium here in person this evening, Ms. Risa Brias.
Hi, and we're really happy to be back for our new school year. Back to school seems to be off to a really strong start. And I'm really excited about Parents Square already receiving a weekly push notification for my kids' grade updates, even though there are no grades yet, was actually really cool. Um, and I think that's going to be an excellent tool for so many parents to keep on top of their kids' grades. It was also great to see so many parents here and seeing these incredible projects from our kids, from Mr. Carlson's cla- um, class was amazing. It was disappointing, though, that our board meetings are structured in such a way that our parents aren't encouraged to stick around. There were so many parents here. Now there are none. My hope is that the board takes the community that you're elected to represent and take these, take measures to be inclusive, take us into consideration in the structure of these meetings. By first moving closed session to the end of meetings and table closed session business as it arises. And second, I would love to see Parents Square notifications to encourage parent turnout for school board meetings. Frankly, district communications have been a little bit of a struggle, especially this summer. We have an understaffed enrollment team. I was supposed to get, you know, my kids' student data by fax to try to apply to choice schools within the district. And I can't even find district events on campus websites or social media. So I couldn't even find when my kid's orientation was supposed to be. I look forward to the renewal of a P I O contract to that effect. I also wanted to address our class size issues. And I recognize that the first week is a really serious shuffle and our class si- our class sizes will be imbalanced at first. So I'm thankful to you, Mr. Moran, for making sure that we have roaming substitutes to support our teachers as class sizes can be a little bit oversized right now. However, once classes are balanced, we're still going to be in the midst of a T-shirt shortage and we're reliant on permanent subs. Our kids need and deserve better, but we're not going to be able to attract and retain talented educators with the worst compensation in the high desert. The state minimum reserve exists to ensure district solvency in case of emergency. But reserve funds in excess of that minimum at this point are opportunities being withheld from our kids. If A E S D and Atalanta are to grow, we need the district to spend today's money on today's kids and make A E S D a competitive employer. The return on investing in our kids cannot be overstated. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Next, Madam President, we'd like to call online. Uh, the first name is Anna Lee and and if Mr. Sinatra, you can find Anna Lee Aquino, I believe.
I'm looking now. I don't see her.
Okay, we'll come back if she happens to jump on. The next person we'd like to welcome online is Jessica Alcantar. Mr. Sinatra, do you see her in the list?
I do not see her either.
All right, moving on to the next person, if we'd like to welcome Ms. Connie Canavan, if she's in the Zoom meeting.
Asking her to unmute now.
Hi, thank you.
Um, I first, I want to welcome Mr. Kraus and I'm very glad with your position. I think that that is a very positive move for our district. Um, I've been with the district in one capacity or another since nineteen ninety four. My, both of my boys were in your district for over twenty years between working in the district, attending school since kindergarten and they both left at the end of last year. I don't understand when my son was in sixth grade. He was horse playing outside during recess and got two days of lunch detention for that. As a teacher, he has a knife wielded at him. Basically got called a liar and the administration made excuses for the student. The student did not even so much as get suspended until my son pushed it and he got one day's suspension. We all know that suspension, it's it's you're to get expelled when you have a knife on campus. He was poking it at other students. He was poking it at my son. And there were no consequences. My son knows what this district was like. He knows he got two days of lunch suspension for horse playing and yet he has a knife jabbed at him as a teacher and nothing happens. He's now gone to another district. He was actually called back our district because you couldn't replace him. He's in a district and he only has twenty students and they have all been very respectful to him. He hasn't been called a name like he was at Mesa Linda on a daily basis. My other son left because of behaviors as well. There's no reason why teachers and other staff are leaving because behaviors are not being dealt with. I also would like to ask, why is there a tampon box in the boys' bathroom at some of the schools? I realize you can't answer me now, but I know that you can when it's your turn to speak. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Mr. Sinatra, do we see the uh, other two in the waiting room by chance?
Jessica Alcantar is on.
Okay, we'd like to welcome Ms. Alcantar. She could unmute.
Hi, good evening.
Good, good, good evening.
Hi, sorry. Um, I was calling, uh, I'm sorry, I wanted to talk as a parent regarding uh, the kids in the el- in some of the elementary school sites, um, their play area. Some of the play area has been shut down since last year. And um, to this date, it still hasn't been um, fixed or reopened. So for a lot of the kids, that is the only play gym that they have um, access to. Besides that, it's just blacktop or grass area. So I was just wondering if that can get addressed as well to see when those jungle gyms will be opening up for our kids as well. That was the only thing I wanted to talk about. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, thank, thank you.
Madam President, that completes the public comments this evening.
All right, thank, thank you. Uh, so let's go, go on to ten cab- cabinet re- reports.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk with all of you this evening. I want to thank you to our parents that came out to support our students this evening. That was one of the best presentations I think I've ever seen. Never seen a talking bird, but it was just amazing how they were able to uh, work with that bird and the and the and the tools that they had. And again, thank you to the teachers because as we know, that's who's really working behind the scenes to really put these ideas in our students' minds and have them dream bigger than they've ever dreamed before. And so one of the things that we will be doing is having student presentations at every single board meeting this year. We are excited that the schools have signed up and they are excited to be able to come and showcase what they're doing at their sites, the teachers, the uh, students. And so we're excited to be able to do that this year. One of the other uh, things I wanted to mention as we start the school year is school site safety and I want the public to know that we take safety as our top priority when it comes to our school sites and our district offices. And some of the things that we've already put in place are single points of entry, where we have a buzzer system that people have to be buzzed in uh, to the front offices. We have a raptor visitor management system which scans IDs to make sure that uh, people are vetted before they uh, step foot on our campus. And then they're given a visitor's badge. We also have ensured our camera systems are up and working and when they go down, we are uh, jumping on that as fast as we can to make sure all of our cameras are working at our sites. We also ensuring that our doors are locked and that we do frequent door lock checks to where we randomly go around and just test the doors to make sure that they're locked during the day. We also are providing active shooter training to staff and will continue to do that, whether it's in person or online or both as we move forward to ensure that our staff are very familiar with procedures related to uh, active shooter trainings. We've also worked closely with our law enforcement and fire departments to update our maps for our sites. So that law enforcement is very familiar with. They get a call to come to our sites. They're familiar with the layout. They can pull it up on their computer quickly and know where to go when we're talking about areas on all of our school sites. And as we move forward, we also look forward to working on district site assessments. That's one of the things that are currently in place, a district security site assessment. Where we have our partners come out, uh, tell us where we might have weak areas. For instance, our fence lines, our defenses too low is an example that they might make a recommendation. We uh, increase our our fence height or a different type of fence. So we're working on that currently this year to be able to do that. We've done it in the past and we're doing it again to update that. We're also going out to bid at some point for a district-wide camera system. Right now, we have cameras, but each school has their own camera system. So we want to make it uniform and twenty-four hours a day that anybody can, staff can pull it up on their laptop and look at it. We're also going to continue educating our staff and our students on safety measures that they can take while they're on our school site. And so we're excited about working with our J P A, Joint Powers Authority, that helps us with that uh, as well. And then we'd like to have school safety committees as well at each site who uh, meet regularly to assess the safety of their site and come up with ideas and recommendations at each site because they are unique uh, at each site. And then we also will work with our board to update our policies and regulations. So I wanted to bring that up because there's a lot of discussion about how safe uh, we can make our school sites and just know that we are doing everything in our power to be able to do that and we will continue to do that as we move forward. So I am excited about the partnerships we have with all of our partners, our J P A, our law enforcement and our trainers that will be working with our staff this year. Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring forward is that uh, we are looking forward, as uh, Ms. Raider mentioned, a a very positive bargaining session this year with both A D T A and C S E As we move forward. So we are excited to bring back that collaboration and that cooperation that uh, has been seen in the past and should really show our staff that we do value them in more ways than just letting them know, hey, thank you. But I want to let you know that we do appreciate every single staff member we have in this district and appreciate all of the work they're doing. And again, look forward to a positive bargaining session. And then the shade structures, it was mentioned about our our playgrounds. Yes, we had anticipated those shade structures being done. But when you dig in the ground, you never know what you're going to find and we found a lot of sand. And so Atalanta apparently is built on a lot of sand and so we had to uh, take some extra measures that we weren't expecting to shore up where the poles will go. But I am happy to uh, announce we're going to have shade over our elementary playgrounds because I don't know about you, but it gets about a hundred and ten on those playgrounds by about eight thirty. So we're excited to be able to cool them down and have our students be able to go out there and play and not have to worry about burning their hands or feet on the uh, shade structures. And with that, I just want to say thank you very much again to all of our families that came out this evening and I'm going to turn it now down to uh, Dr. Wising and Academic Services.
All right, good afternoon. Um, I would, or good evening. I would like to start out by, uh, first of all, thanking our entire academic services division for their hard work in preparing for the new school year. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes and I just want to take the time to thank all of them. I would be remiss if I didn't thank our partners in business services, human resources, our teachers, support staff and school leaders because we can't do it without them. So um, we just want to say thank you for a great start to the school year. Um, so some updates from our division, so special education update. So we have three new school psychologists um, starting this year. We have all vacancies and our special ed department are filled. So we want to thank our H R um, partners for that. Um, we're excited to be able to service our students um, this year in special education and also with our new uh, speech agency this year, um, already hitting the ground running to service our students. Um, so right now, our special education department's busy reviewing I E P documents, making sure students are being placed correctly. Um, and so so far, things are going well. Um, I would like to thank all of those that attended the Parent Summit and Resource Fair. We were able to serve over one eight hundred students at the fair. Um, we had a keynote from Ms. Dolores Williams of Millionaire Minds speaking to our parents and students about mindset and success for the new school year. That was very well received. We were able to give out backpacks, books, clothes, shoes, sweaters, um, school supplies, comfort bags with toys inside. So parents were leaving. It was really nice. They were leaving like loaded, loaded up. Um, but they were very, very happy and very thankful. Um, so a huge thank you to over twenty of our community partners who were also present on that day. Um, our district, um, we also want to thank our district colleagues at C N S Maintenance and Operations and Melvin Davis um, Academy of Excellence and their staff for their support while hosting us for that event. Um, I want to thank our enrollment center team. They're working as hard as they can to process all enrollments. Um, over the summer, they've heard, they've actually processed over thirteen hundred enroll- Um, over the summer, they've heard, they've actually processed over thirteen hundred enrollments. Um, and they're working as hard, it just keeps going daily. Um, we've added extra subs, support staff, um, they've worked overtime, they even worked over the weekend. To try to make sure they get all of our students in and families. So I just want to give them a very special thank you for their hard work. Um, I just want to let the public know, um, you don't need to have an appointment, you can walk right in. We will help you as soon as we can. It's been busy the last couple of days as you can imagine. Uh, but they are doing a fabulous job trying to get, um, all of, um, our families and students taken care of. Um, so we are excited, we, we heard this evening, um, but we've launched Parent Square. Um, it's a new two-way communication tool synced with Aries. So anytime a parent updates their, um, information, it updates for that communication tool. Um, and so, uh, with the help of our IT team, we had, um, Michael, Anthony, Alex, we just want to thank them. Uh, we've launched it Friday evening, we've already had over twenty-six hundred parents sign up and activate. So we are gonna do another push and a launch, we're excited about that. Um, with the beginning of school, it's our initial LPAC testing. So we have to make sure we get all initials done within the first thirty days of school. So, um, our schools are already, um, ready and excited and, um, getting the kids. Once we get them in, we gotta get the kinders in first, but once we get them in, they're, they're ready to go. Um, we are gearing up for County Williams inspections. We have nine of our schools being inspected this year, they, and they look for books, materials, facilities. Um, we are currently in the midst of FPM, which is our federal program monitoring. We're being monitored in four areas this year. Uh, federal stimulus monitoring, our English learners programs, expanded learning programs and supporting effective instruction. Um, additionally, four of our sites also are being, um, asked to contribute specifically for their site. So we are, um, our team is on top of that and we actually, um, working with our other two divisions to make sure that we're taken care of. Um, we're also working with the county on our final LCAP revision. So we have a meeting with them later this week and we're, we are on top of that. And then a huge thank you to our district nurses who are busy setting up health screenings, updating health plans. Uh, it's a busy time of year, but we are, we are thankful for them. And then we also have, um, our hope and our independent study programs, um, for our students who are starting. And so we want to make sure you know that independent study is an option for students. Um, if you need an alternative setting. And so we are taking, um, you must attend orientation, you must sign a contract. But if you need more information, you can find that information on our website. So, um, just, I think that's it for academic services. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Moran, give us some updates on human resources.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kraus. All right, good evening, President Benz, trustees, uh, community members and district colleagues. So thank you for letting me share this evening. So first, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Raider for nice comments this evening. I also like to thank Ms. Raider and Steve Tapia for meeting with me last week to review student enrollment. Uh, numbers and staffing, we'll continue to work together over the next few weeks to monitor daily attendance as relates to appropriate staffing. So thank you for that collaboration. Uh, also with CSEA, I'd like to thank our CSEA colleagues, uh, Ms., uh, Diane Lynn and her team for our work this past summer. And their input, um, for, for providing some input for our summer trainings that took place. And we look forward to continuing our work with CSEA this year. So I'd like to, uh, also share that our HR team and, and I, um. Uh, had a great time at the welcome back. Uh, I know that was led by Mr. Kraus, so thank you for that. And I would also like to, uh, just welcome everyone back. Uh, we got a lot of work to do moving forward. And also thank our, our certificated and classified staff and you to the district. Thank you for choosing to work here in the Adelanto community. And if you need anything from us, from any of our departments, let us know. Back on July twenty-second, uh, HR hosted the clerical substitute and health clerk substitute training. Was it, you know, just a huge thank you to Ms. Christina Root, who, who helped us, uh, and the staff. Uh, actually, some of that training was done at El Mirage, so appreciate her helping Gloria from our department. Um, also I'd like to give a shout out to, uh, Mr. Barrett, uh, Karen Evers and Brenda Holtz. Who also provided training refreshers that, uh, for the Aries training. I believe I shared that, uh, back in, in July and that training was very well attended. Um, also, uh, thanks to our, uh, our, our team and, and partners from payroll and benefits. And, and our HR team for hosting the classified employer orientation that was, uh, very well attended as well. And we also had, uh, two full days with our new teacher orientation. And I'd just like to thank, um, there, there are many people and hopefully I'm not missing anybody. And if I do, I apologize, but we had, uh, several people who were helping on the two-day new teacher orientation. Ms. Joanna Koo, uh, Marla, uh, Bradfield, uh, Ms. Norwood, Macheko Norwood and Ms. Raider attended as well. So it was a team effort and a great start for our new teachers in the district. Um, also, uh, HR had hosted a welcome back training for certified substitutes. This too was a team effort, uh, this training was presented, um, uh, by Kimberly from our HR department. But, uh, Vicky Bell and Kim Smith, two teachers from our district, um, really did a great job. I, I went by there and they had substitute teachers engaged. Uh, they shared effective practices and strategies to use when, when substituting in our district classrooms. Um, also the, um, the HR, uh, department, uh, I'm sorry, on August third, uh, HR set up a secretary's meeting. At, at Gus Franklin's, I'd like to thank, uh, the presenters from risk management, purchasing and child nutrition services. You know, that was Dana Curtis, Alejandra, Kimberly, Gloria, Starhuggins, uh, Zach Clemmish, Sylvia Hayes. Kiri Ewing and Lori McMillan, uh, without, uh, all of us coming together, uh, uh, we couldn't, uh, gotten this done. And then again, I just, uh, you know, our back to school event at Melva Davis, so thank you for that. Um, and lastly, I'd like to also share that, uh, we got several donations from, uh, several people. Uh, Atkinson, Anderson, Loyal, Root and Romo, uh, one of our attorney groups donated, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars. To our district, uh, for raffle prizes and things like that. Uh, Fagan, Friedman and Full Frost, other attorney group, uh, donated five hundred dollars, uh, towards that. Um, another, uh, partner, Horace Mann donated two hundred dollars in, yeah, uh, with Starbucks cards. They donated eight twenty-five dollar Starbucks cards. Schools First, our partners as well, did donated a hundred and fifty dollars. There were four twenty-five dollar target cards, one, uh, twenty-five dollar gift card and a twenty-five dollar gift card to Jersey Mike's. And then, uh, Lori McMillan from our purchasing, uh, was able to secure the grand prize that, that day. A five hundred dollar Yeti seventy gallon cooler. This thing is like enormous, it's, and it's heavy. Um, and I guess it's supposed to, to keep, uh, sodas and refreshments like coal for days. So, so someone, one of our teachers, I believe, won that one. So again, I'd just like to, to thank our HR team, Dr. Dwyson's team, Mr. Kraus's business division team for, uh, the collaboration. I appreciate the teamwork and our dedication from everyone who, who helped us, uh, the last, uh, the last couple of weeks. So thank you again for listening and this is our updates from HR.
Thank you, team. And I did have one more thing that reminded me. Thank you, Mr. Moran. So at the, uh, welcome back, uh, I did raffle off a day of myself. Any teacher at Morgan Kincaid did win me and she will be using me for the science competition in January. From seven in the morning till seven at night. So just wanted to shout out to Kristen over at Morgan Kincaid. Uh, she is, uh, very gracious about, uh, not making me do too much work that day, but I'm excited to be able to do that. So, uh, again, congratulations to Kristen Hudson over at Morgan Kincaid.
We should, yeah, we should raff, raffle you up somewhere. Okay, go, go. Going on to, uh, gov, governing board mem, members reports and, and now announcements. Who would like, like to go, go first?
Well, usually I try to skip it because of time, but I have a lot to say. Um, okay, first I'm gonna start off with the back to school breakfast and lunch, it was awesome. Our family reunion is back and I am so excited. We are a family, I want to bring the family back and just having that breakfast and lunch just really set it off. And I hope it continues throughout the year. Um, I also want to thank, um, Mr. Kraus for donating to the raffle. Um, I've never seen a superintendent do that before. Um, he was very kind to personally donate and that was very touching. I really appreciated that. Um, okay, and then moving on. I attended our school safety conference with the administrators and it was great. Our district is always doing many of the things that they taught us and we're very focused on school safety, um, this year. Because we know kids and teachers cannot learn or teach unless they feel safe. So I'm really looking forward to that. I think we're off to a good start. I know I'm gonna follow up with it, I'm gonna pay close attention to the schools and our safety and what's going on and what we're doing about it. And we just need to stay on top of it, we need to stay diligent. And I want everybody to be involved in school safety. We all need to protect our kids and our schools, whether you're administrator, a teacher, uh, uh, an employee on campus. Those are our schools and we want them safe. And I think if we all buy into it and we all help, I think we're gonna have some pretty good and safe schools. And let's face it, that's what everybody wants. Um, then moving on, I attended, um, oh gosh, uh, Monday morning, I went to Columbia Middle School to help welcome the kids to school. Um, it went well and they were ready to start school, the campus looked good, the teachers and staff were ready to go. Um, but I'm gonna throw in my little two cents here. Um, I did see a few sixth graders kind of get just dropped off and they just stood there at frozen. And I, I kinda went to my mother mode and I went over to them and asked them if they needed help and they just started crying. And I was, oh my gosh, you don't cry around me. I was crying and I was hugging them and you could tell they were just so lost and scared to death being on a junior high campus. So I took a few of those little ones into the cafeteria, we found their classrooms, I walked them to their classrooms. I made sure they sat down because some did not want to. And when I was getting ready to leave, they wanted to come with me and I told them, no, you gotta stay here, this is your classroom. And I was just praying over them, hoping that they would make friends and feel comfortable. And by the time I left the classroom, you could tell they, they started feeling more at ease and so did I. But man, as a mom, you just see these little ones so scared and so lost, you know, and I can only imagine. But anyway, um, we got all our kids in the classrooms, the teachers were ready to teach, the kids looked excited. And I think it was a really great day and I was so blessed to be there and experience that. So I just wanted to share that real quick. Other than that, I just want to welcome everybody back to our district and I think we're gonna have an awesome year. I feel extremely positive and it's gonna be good and I just can't wait, you know, it's just gonna be beautiful. So anyway, that's all I have to say and thank you very much.
Thank you. Who'd like to jump in?
Okay, I'll get it over with. Um, good evening, ASD family, staff and everyone in between. I want to take a minute and say thank you to, or for being with us tonight for our first board meeting back to school this year. First, um, first off, I want to comment on a strategic planning meeting we attended at the end of July. And I want to make a special thank you to our cabinet for coming in and presenting. I am excited to see the plans that each department has worked on. I want to say thank you to Mr. Baird, I hope I said that right, Director of Special Education. Mr. Clemmish over in Financial Services and Julie Nichols from CNS for coming and spending their Saturday with us. Bringing us up to speed and briefing us in their departments. Um, it was. Uh, a special shout out to our executive assistants for putting all of that together that weekend in such a short, a me, or short amount of time. It really is amazing with, um, the things that each and every single one of the assistants brings to this team. Secondly, today was our second day of school. As a mom, I was super excited for this week. As a trustee, I would like to say thank you to our entire AESD family. Everyone who got out to our school or who got our schools prepared for this week. To those opening gates and crossing kids, I've seen a lot of district administration out lending their hands. On the first two days of school, thank you to everyone who got out and supported the kickoff of this year. Every level of our district makes a difference every day. So thank you to all for making this Monday a great start. A special thank you to Yvonne Mateos for getting a, getting us geared up social media and website wise this year. Thank you to our IT department, uh, for the numerous things you gentlemen do. Uh, the list goes on, I can't list them all. And Mr. Kraus, there is only so much you can say about how great you have been doing. Um, in the last few weeks, I've seen a dedicated man, one who isn't afraid to take charge. One who uses compassion and understanding, but most importantly, one who understands the focus of the board. Bringing our district together, we're administrative certi, certificated staff and classified staff feel that they are important. Where students are encouraged and supported in an equitable manner. So thank you again for stepping up, sir. Thank you for taking the lead on bringing the district to this week successfully. And I want to finish off with saying thank you for the time. Um, everybody being out here for us tonight and please drive home safely.
Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, trust, trustee La, La French?
Well, I just don't know how I'm gonna come behind all of that being felt, except ditto, 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 ditto and ditto some more. I want to say that I have had such a wonderful time spending time with, um, cabinet. And, um, the fellow board members, um, on our retreat. Um, it's all, it always feels really good when we get together and we are working together as a team. As a team, we have our leader, Mr. Kraus, and I want to say thank you because. You set the example on how we start at the top. I've enjoyed our time together, um, the professional development day. I didn't get to win that fancy, um, cooler, I don't know what I would have done with it anyway, I don't barely go outside. But it sound like it was wonderful. And all of the gift cards and everything that were given out and the teachers, you know. I'm always, you know, have teachers in my heart, I'm a teacher by nature, you know, I started off with my little ones that are zero to five. Um, I, the first day of school coming back, my baby missed it because of her surgery. However, I passed by schools, uh, to see children and, and families and parents out there, everyone ready to go. Our school's being clean, I'm not gonna go on and on, but you know, it's just a wonderful feeling that we all have right now. And moving forward, this is the best way to start off our school year with, um, ASD all on the same map moving forward. I say thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Come behind that, huh?
Yes, I should have went first. I would just like to ditto on everything that my fellow trustees just said. We have an amazing staff, we have an amazing bunch of children that. Look, look at this creative, how creative they, they were. They went on a two-week field trip and they came back and built birds. They put each feather, they put the beaks, they put the transmission in these birds. And you could tell by their faces and their, their excitement that they really enjoyed it. And the teachers, you're awesome. You know, you give them the encouragement and the motivation to be able to create something like this. I just want to say welcome back. I'm confident that this year, instead of hearing that we're the worst district, worst performing district. In San Bernardino County, they're gonna be behind us, running to catch up with us. And I see the encouragement, I see the smiles, I see the happiness. I see our school shining, not only during the daytime, but also at night, the lights are on. Thank you, Mr. Kraus, for doing that. Our schools, I'm happy to hear that we're focusing on safety, 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 as well as academics. Our parents send our children to school to, not only to get an education, but to be safe. All children, even the ones that come with some, some issues, we want them safe too. Because they don't understand their children. And so I know that we have a dedicated staff, we have a dedicated cabinet. And I'm happy to hear my cabinet speak, you know, you've been silent for, for a year or two. And, and it's happy to hear what's going on in your departments. Our strategic, our, our, actually our retreat two Saturdays ago, was it two Saturdays ago? Guess it was. I learned more during that short period of time than I had in a long time to hear the excitement. To hear the excitement, the plans that you have moving forward. For our students, for our staff. Um, professional development. I see Mr. Kraus, I get the email, the text messages. He's out and about in every department. Making sure that everything is running smoothly and teachers. For the first time in a long time, I didn't hear. About you, you walk into your classroom and your, 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 your TVs are not hung or you don't have supplies that you need. It's really good to hear positive things going on in our district and I know that that will continue. And I just wanna say thank you. For caring for our kids, even though it's the second day of school. I know. Looking at these children, they did not wanna leave summer school. So I know their excitement will be there, you know, to the end of the school year. And thank you, Ms. Williams, for providing. I wasn't there. I was out of town. So I wasn't there, but I know, I know, I, I've seen you in action. And I know that your message was greatly received. So thank you so much. Again, to IT, to. Yeti, the assistants in the back, we couldn't do it without you. Sandra. Yeti. Exenia, I look over there and this is the first time that I've never, I, I haven't seen your face. I know you're gonna be okay. Because you are the glue to keep us, keeping us together. So thank you so much and thank all of you for all you do. My fellow trustees. You know. I appreciate you. And trustee La French, where is she? I don't see her.
There, there she is.
There she is. You know. It's been a long time that I felt comfortable. You know, and I think, being here, sitting here. I think we're gonna get some, we're gonna do some great things. Some phenomenal things. And again, thank you, Mr. Kraus. For stepping in, you know, and keeping us moving. Thank you, Dr. DeWise, for your department, keeping, you know, preparing to get our kids educated in your plan. Like I said, they're gonna be chasing us to find out what we're doing. And Human Resources, thank you for bringing in the best. And hopefully we won't have teachers leaving us. That we can come together and fulfill their needs. Because it's rough out there. And if we have it, we gotta give it. You know, to do what we need to do for our students. So that's all I have and thank you again. Looking forward to an, uh, another school year. And let's keep the excitement. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So where's my, my book? No, I'm just kidding, kidding. I did not, as president here, I'm trying like time, time. But I do have to say some things. First thing, um. AB three, six, seven, seven is the state law passed in October. To, October of twon, twenty twan, twenty one. That re, re, requires by law fem- feminine per- products in at least. One boy's restroom. So that wasn't a choice, that was a law. Two, I want to thank because. Jay, Jaylen Fig, Figaro, Roa could not be. Be, be here. We missed the con. Con, conversation, but we have her bird. And, uh, Ms. Chris, Kristen O, O'Brien, Brian was kind, kind enough to show. And just brag on these, these kids about how great they are. And I know as a te-. Teacher, that's the best part of the job. Is to brag on the kids cuz the kids, they always amaze. Um, my school started, started a few weeks ago, so I was unable, able to go to all the wel-. Welcome backs and breakfast cuz I was in the classroom with my own kids. But I do say that I love back to school. It's my favorite time of year. Not just because of the ba- back to school shop, shop, shopping, though that's a big plus. But for me, it's like springtime. It's a renewal of the spirit. And you start a new class, you start a new grade. And for, I mean, as, as a te- teacher, I get excited. Because I don't know who's gonna be in my, my class. And every kid come, comes in with the clean slate. And every class you have, it's like a diff- different org- organism. You can teach fifth grade for nine years and every single class was dif- different from the last. You never, it's like a box, box of choc- chocolates. Um, but I just wanna wish everyone the best because this is. To me, this is the job where you can make good mem- memories. And that's always been my, my thing. Teach, teach, teach the, the academics, but make good mem-. Memories. So I wish you all the best and have a great school year. Okay? All right. So with that being said, let's please go on to staff re-reports and presentation. Tations, twelve point zero, zero, one, ac- academic ser- services. Staff re-report of Will, Williams Fourth Quarterly Re-Report for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like, uh, Dr. DeWise to, uh, give an update on the Williams Report.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Um, so this is our annual, um, we're required to bring to you our Williams findings. Uh, four times a year in October, January, April and July. And basically, um, when you have those Williams, so we're getting ready to actually start a new season of Williams. But this is the closeout from last year for fourth quarter. So, um, they inspect it's. Any things that's reported instructional materials, our school accountability report cards, our school facilities and teacher assignments. And basically for us for fourth quarter, there were no findings in either, in any area. Nope. So we are clear and good.
Oh, that's great. Oh, nice, quick presentation. That's awesome. Now, okay, let, let's move, move on to, uh, third, thirteen, uh, adopt. Adoption of, of the amen- minutes, uh, board min- minutes, uh, approve as writ- written and ord- order filled. Reg, regular board me- meeting of Jul- July twelfth, twenty twenty two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I guess my motion.
Can I get a sec- second?
Webster, I second.
Uh, we're open for de- discussion, discussion. Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner? Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Motion, motion pa- passes five zero, zero. Move, moving on to, uh, four, fourteen con- consent, uh, agenda. We are ta- taking i- items for fourteen point zero two through four, fourteen point twenty five. Does an, any trustee want to pull an item?
I wanna pull fourteen point eighteen.
Fourteen point eighteen, Webster?
That's it.
Okay.
I guess I'm gonna pull fourteen oh six.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Um, I want to pull, uh, fort, four, fourteen point nine. Nineteen, fourteen point nine nineteen, sorry. Okay, okay. So we are taking. All i- i- items except four, fourteen point zero, zero, six. Four, fourteen point eighteen and four, fourteen point nine, nineteen. Can I get a mo- motion to approve the remain- remaining i- items?
Webster motions to approve.
I guess I second.
Okay. All right. So, oh, we need a vote.
I'll take the vote. Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion pa- passes five zero, zero. Okay, so now we're gonna go, go on to the i- items re- removed. From the consent agen- agenda and we'll, we'll start with, um, four, fourteen point zero, zero, six. Approval of the, uh, agreement, agreement be between millionaire minds kids. And, uh, Adalanto El- Elementary School Dis- District for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. Um, I need a mo- motion.
I motion to get discussion.
Okay, I need a sec- second.
Webster, I second.
Okay, we're o- open for dis- discussion.
Okay, so, so real quickly, this is our after-school program and it says here that they accept thirty students per school site. So I had a, a couple questions. Um, first of all, is there a waiting list? Do they, do these schools usually have more than thirty kids that want to be in the after-school program?
Thank you for that question, trustee. I guess this is in addition to our after-school program. So this is to add to our STEM. Um, is actually an example of this afternoon of what we saw with our students. So we have four, uh, schools and if we have additional students who like at, actually, we piloted this at Adalanto Elementary School. And West Side Park last year and we did have quite a few students who were interested. Um, we can bring that back, but we, um, right now, so we have four schools. A hundred and twenty students for grades three through five. Um, we also have robotics in the middle school. We're trying to ramp up participation in our middle schools. And we really think robotics will do that. And we also will have an aviation track as well with flight simulators and teaching kids about aviation. So we are prepared. If we do have additional, we will, we wanna work with millionaire minds to increase that, should we need to.
Okay, so if there is a waiting list for a certain, uh, particular after-school program. Uh, what will they do? Will they rotate the children so they all get a chance to be involved?
Yes, so they work closely. Um, we wanna make sure to give as many students the opportunity. Um, and this is, it's, I'm, I'm actually really excited that you pulled this because this is our extended learning opportunities grant. Which, um, is allowing us to bring these opportunities to our students. And so should we need to increase this program for our students because the demand is there? We are prepared and do have the funds to do so.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, cuz I want all kids to have a chance and I was just thinking if there is a waiting list. Maybe they can keep track of that and then the following year, make sure those kids that were on the waiting list. Get in so that the kids don't duplicate and, and keep getting those spots and the other kids can't. So yeah, if we're gonna rotate, that would be beautiful and if we have extra money to add more, that's awesome. Cuz the kids need to stay busy and if they wanna do our after-school programs, I think we should always have stuff available. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need a mo- motion to, uh, uh, approve.
I motion that we approve.
I second.
And second from trustee Ech- Echus.
Madam President, just for clarification, I thought we had a first from trustee Echus and a second from trustee Webster. Did that change?
Uh, we, we had a, a mo- mo- motion for dis- de- discuss. Discussion and not, not to, to, uh, uh, approve.
Wouldn't that, okay, I thought that would be now just to take the vote since it is a motion to approve.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and I'll take the vote. Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
The French?
La French, I.
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion pa- passes five zero, zero. Okay. Before we go on, it is now nine fourteen. I believe we have to extend a little bit to try to get through. We just have two i- items after. The consent. We have two on new biz- business. So we think we, we cannot not go, what, can we vote up, up to ten and just try to see how fast we can get out here?
Can we go till nine fifteen on the vote or nine twenty-five on the vote?
No, we go to nine thirty.
We, we still have to do the two things on the con- consent and then two, two thi- things on new, new biz.
We can go nine forty-five or ten.
Okay.
Well, let, let, let's shoot for ten, just for the vote, but we'll try to get out of there soon, sooner, okay?
Webster motions to extend time till ten, uh, PM.
I second.
I'll take the vote. Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
The Echus?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I. Mo- motion pa- passes five zero, zero. Okay, so now that we've got that, that done, let's please go, go on to four, fourteen point eight, eighteen. Trustee Web- Webster, I believe you pull, pulled this one. Can I get a motion for discussion or approval?
Motion for approval.
Mo- motion for approve, approval.
I guess I second.
I'll talk about it. Of course we can.
Um, I wanted to pull this today because I see all of these individuals, they're stepping up for different. Positions, uh, sports. Uh, technology specialists, EL coordinators, and I just wanna take the, the moment and say thank you to each and every individual on this list. Um, for stepping up and doing those extra duties. I, you know, some of my coaches were the most inspirational in my youth and growing up. So thank you very much and, uh, that's my close.
I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't mean to laugh cuz she, she, she tried to, to scroll up on the screen and it didn't go.
Oh yeah, we kinda see the bottom.
So, so.
There are coaches on here, I promise.
Okay, so we had a, a mo- motion to, to approve by Web- Webster and I missed the sec- second. Holly, okay, so can we please call for the vote?
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
The Echus?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Um, I. Mo- motion pass, passes five zero, zero. Okay, go, 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 going on to four, fourteen point nine, nineteen. I pulled this, I mo- mo- motion, motion to, to approve. I just, I nee- needed us for, I pulled, pulled it for more clar- clarification.
I motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, got a motion from Echus, second from Webster. Okay, can we please have some clarification on this?
Mr. Moran, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Moran will elaborate on these positions.
Yes, all right. Thank you. Absolutely. Um, so. So in regard, I'm sorry, I apologize cuz I'm looking at my screen as I'm going through these pages. So these positions, um. Are to fill, uh, positions, uh, for folks that, that retired. Uh, some, uh, were, uh, were also replacements for any folks that resigned last year. I, I can't. Share the names over there, but, uh, so, so, so some of them are new positions. So for example. Um, you know, school psychologist, that's a new position. Uh, actually, school psychologist is a replacement. Uh, for two, two vacancies we had there. Um, uh, the only, there's a new position, the social worker, that is a new position. Uh, but you'll see several teacher, uh, positions that are on there. Those were, uh, due to either folks resigning last year or retiring last year. Uh, from the district. Um, and so, uh, a couple of them may have gone on the thirty-nine month re- rehire list because of, uh, some medical reasons and things like that. So we're replacing them. So they're not all new and, and they are well within our, our budgeted numbers.
Okay, I, I was just confused or I guess con- concerned because we, we, we did riff. Te- teachers, we brought them back and then we were hiring for position, institution. So I wasn't clear of what was hap-
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, and, uh, you know, cabinet's aware of, we have a certain FTE number. And so we're making sure we, we're staying at that number. Um, but like I said, uh, several of these, uh, because I know last year, we did do a riff, and then we rescinded, um, all of them back, or most of them back. But in addition, if you recall, there was a, um, early notification incentive, uh, to let us know about, uh, retiring sooner, I think it was like March. And so, you know, some of those went well beyond the twenty-five, so these are, are replacing, yeah.
Okay, all right, that, I, I just want, want, wanted that, that explained.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, separately, if there's a request separately, I have the information that I can give, so you guys can, uh, review it, so you, you kind of match the replacement. But I just, because it's a personal item, I can't share it.
That's fine. Okay, so, and any other ques, questions, trustees? Okay, call for, for the vote, vote please.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee LaFrenche?
LaFrenche, I.
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo, mo, motion passes five zero, zero. Move, moving on to six, uh, six sixteen, new biz, business. Uh, six, sixteen point zero zero one, uh, approved board res, resolution. Twon, twenty-two point twenty-three point zero eight, make, making find, findings as re, acquired by A B three six one. To per, permit the, the Board of Trustees me, meeting to contain, continue to be conducted by tel, telecon, conference, while, while co, the co, COVID nine, nineteen, um, emerge, emergency remains in place. Uh, can I get a mo, motion to approve?
Turner, a motion to approve.
Webster, I second.
Webster seconds. Okay, uh, call for the vote?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Discussion.
Sorry, I, I'm, I'm just like on the time thing, okay, so we're open for discuss, discussion.
Okay, my discussion is, what is going on? Um, our schools are back open, we're in person, um, everything's back open, what are we doing here? We're saying we want to go back into closed session teleconference meetings?
No.
Because that's what it looks like.
No, this is, this will give us the, the option to zoom in without have, having to post on the, uh, agenda, agenda. The, uh, address of where we're at, like, you know, like, like when, when tr, trustee turn, turn, Turner, what was sick. She, she could, could zoom, zoom in. You know, we, we still can, can meet, but it gives the, the board an option, if they get, get sick, to, to zoom. And because, like, one, one, one time, it, it was la, last min, minute, and trustee Turner had, had to come, come in sick.
We need, because we needed a quorum here, with this amendment, we don't need.
No, no, I get all that, you guys, I know the policy, I know all about it, but it wasn't worded that way. It looks more like we are going back into closed session, so I think it should read a little bit more like, this is an option, or this is, um, a, an alternative that the board would like to use when needed. Other than that, it came across very clear to me, and, and lots of points here, that the board wants to go back into Zoom. So, I don't know, I didn't like the way it was worded, or the way I was reading it, so I'm thinking the public must have read it the same way. Um, but no, I'm, I'm very clear on the policy and what it states, and yes, it is scary, because when you do go into clothes and, um, you do Zoom, yeah, you got to give everybody all your information. So, having said all that, if that is basically what that is saying, that we can still do in person. But if need be, if a board member needs for any reason to do it by Zoom, then I'm okay with that. But again, it didn't come across to me that way. So, that is the clarification then, that this is, uh, for emergency use for board members that need to use this service if needed, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And not be able to have a quorum at the day.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I just want to clarify, if two of us show up, we're good, correct?
Yes.
All right.
One of you show up, one of us show up.
Well, yeah, I'll show up. La, last time, you and I were the only ones who were here, and the other three were on Zoom.
I thought we had one extra.
No, it was, it was just, just you, you and I, yeah. It was just you and I.
I do show up.
That, that was prior, prior.
Yeah, well, we approved this, um.
As long as I can come and get shrimp.
It was, I, I, I think two me, me, meetings ago, we approved this, and you, you and I were first like, no, 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 wait a minute. And then Z explained it, no, it gives us the, the chance to Zoom and not have, have to post the, the old way. And then you, you and I have, were like, oh, okay, then, okay.
Adrian and our attorney, our board attorney, advised us to do that.
Yeah, so.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, okay, can you call for the vote, vote please?
Yes, trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee LaFrenche?
LaFrenche, I.
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo, motion pass, passes five zero, zero. Okay, go, going on to six, sixteen point zero zero two, uh, bus, business ser, services, approval of re, resolution. Twenty-two point twenty-three point zero set seven, and agreement with the Cal, California and Energy Commit Mission for Cal Shape. Grant fi, funding for he, heating, vent, ventilation, and air condish, conditioning sys, systems. Just a quick, can you give us a quick thing?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, periodically, the state of California, uh, gives out money to districts, very rare, uh, where they do that. But in this case, uh, we are eligible for about a little over eight hundred thousand dollars to assess and potentially upgrade our HVAC systems district wide. And so, we, we have two choices, to either leave it on the table, or to accept it and to, uh, follow the guidelines of the grant. And I want to thank Lori McMillan and our purchasing department for really, uh, capturing these grants that the state offers districts, and to be able to bring this before the board this evening. So, this will enable us again to, uh, basically, uh, assess and upgrade our HVAC systems, and it's free money from the state. Uh, all we have to do is just follow the restrictions involved in it.
Okay, great, can, can I get a mo, motion to approve? Okay, I got.
I guess I second.
Okay, I have a mo, motion by Web, Webster, and a se, second by Echus. We are o, open for dis, de, discuss, discussion?
I would just like to say that, you know, I really, I just want to commend Lori McMillan, she does a great job. Going out, finding these grants, she found grants for electric buses. You know, she, um, she's an asset to our district, and, you know, I would just like to, um, just congratulate her and just acknowledge her for her hard work. She, uh, prepare, uh, um, she get our bids, she's still doing that, right, Mr. Chris?
Yes, she is indeed, absolutely.
Right, so I just want to, um, um, just acknowledge Lori for doing an outstanding job.
Okay, uh, call for the vote?
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee LaFrenche?
LaFrenche, I.
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo, mo, motion pass, passes five zero, zero, zero. We are in adjournment, can I get a mo, motion?
Echus, I motion.
Echus, I motion.
Turner, second.
Turner, second, let's call for that vote.
Can I say one quick comment?
No, because you're running out of time. Webster's, I.
Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee LaFrenche?
LaFrenche, I.
Trustee Echus?
I.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I, mo, motion pass, pass, passes by, five zero, zero. It is nine twenty-nine, everybody have a great, great night, safe drive, drive home, and good night.
Z, feel better.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
We love you.
Thank you.
I was trying to fit that in.